Welcome to the General Election Candidate Forum for City of Tacoma Districts Five and Six. I am Liz Knox, the moderator, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium, I welcome the candidates and audience to this community candidate forum. I also want to welcome Maureen Fife from the Affordable Housing Consortium, who will give a brief opening statement. So Maureen, if you would, please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I am the CEO of Tacoma Pierce County Habitat for Humanity, and this year it is my honor to be president of the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium. The consortium is made up of housing developers, housing providers, architects, engineers, financial institutions, entities that want to try and produce more affordable housing in our community. The consortium's mission is to provide public education and advocacy in support of affordable housing development. To further this mission, we are honored to annually partner with the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County to host candidate forums focusing on affordable housing issues. I'm thrilled to be part of this. It's a great partnership, so thank you, League of Women Voters, and I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you so much, Maureen. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 101 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways we do this. Anyone 16 or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website, In voters' pamphlet order, the candidates for Tacoma City Council at Large Position Six are Kiara Daniels and Brett Johnson. And for Position Five, the candidates are Joe Bushnell and Ann Artman. Joe Bushnell is not with us tonight. This year's... Oh, you are? I'm sorry. No, I, Brett Johnson is not with us tonight. Thank you, Joe, for correcting me. Sorry. So it's Brett Johnson who isn't with us tonight.
Brett just joined us also, Liz.
Oh, Brett did?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I guess we're all here. Okay. This year's general election is on November 2nd. Ballots will be mailed out on Friday, October 15th. If you are a registered voter, if you are not yet registered or have moved, you may register at vote.wa.gov by October 25th. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by 8:00 PM November 2nd. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County website at www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. Questions have been prepared by the Affordable Housing Consortium and our cosponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via text to 253-861-6824. That's 253-861-6824. Please do not put questions in the chat, because I can't, I don't access those during our forum. So again, please text any questions to 253-861-6824. Our timekeeper today is Terry Baker of the League of Women Voters. She will hold up cards to let candidates know when they have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15, and when it is time to stop. When you see the stop card, you may finish a short sentence. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see me and the timekeeper, Terry Baker. Please do not talk unless it is your turn. Please mute yourselves when it is not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. A reminder that civility is expected. I ask you each to confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which, among other things, include addressing the issues, not other candidates or their positions. Please confirm with a thumbs up right now that you agree. Okay, thank you. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of questions will rotate, and each candidate will be asked the same question. At the end, each candidate can make a one-minute closing statement. The order of the opening two-minute statements will be in voter pamphlet order. So we will start with Kiara Daniels, then Brett Johnson, then Joe Bushnell, and then Ann Artman. So to begin, Kiara, would you like to make your opening statement?
Am I on you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, 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 okay. Just making sure. All right, let's see. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Kiara Daniels, and I'm running for Position Six on the Tacoma City Council, and that's an at-large position. I was born and raised in the Hilltop neighborhood here in Tacoma, and I graduated from the Evergreen State College with my bachelor's degree, and then with my master's in public administration. Right now, I serve as the Business and Community Development Coordinator for Spaceworks Tacoma, where I work to secure space and resources for Black businesses in the Hilltop District. Before this, I worked in a variety of roles at Peace Community Center. I volunteered at Habitat for Humanity, and also did some coordination for the United Way of Pierce County. I've also served on several city boards and commissions, and I am one of the leaders of Design the Hill, which is a housing group in the Hilltop neighborhood. And today, I'm running for an at-large seat on the city council, because I know that Tacoma is facing significant challenges, and we need action now. Sorry. I believe that we need leaders that are not only smart but bold and able to do the work that needs to be done to get us where we need to go. So with that, I will leave you with, we can get into the questions after everybody's done.
Thank you, thank you. And now Brett. Brett Johnson.
Hi. Thanks for the opportunity to participate tonight. My name is Brett Johnson. I'm a nearly lifelong resident of Tacoma. My Tacoma story started in 1982 at St. Joseph Hospital. I spent my elementary years in Tacoma's east side, living in the home that my great-grandparents lived in when they immigrated from Germany to escape Hitler in 1929. After completing Rogers Elementary School, my family relocated to the north end, where I attended St. Patrick's School for Middle School, three years of Bellarmine, and graduated from Stadium. After high school, I realized that I wasn't a four-year-university-type individual, so I pursued a career as an air traffic controller in the United States Air Force, where I became an air traffic controller, and I also gained a degree in air traffic control management and operations. After completing the Air Force, I joined the Federal Aviation Administration as an air traffic controller, Boise. And then I moved on to another opportunity as an air traffic controller, or civilian air traffic controller, at Kandahar Air Base in Afghanistan in support of the NATO mission. After being gone for nearly 10 years, I realized that Tacoma was my, was in fact my city of destiny, and the path to come home as an air traffic controller would be another 10 years. So I came home and pursued another avenue as a local business owner. I've been operating a business on 72nd and McKinley, the former location of my grandfather's kitchen and bath showroom since 2010, and I'm a founding partner of Wayne &amp; Flitch, an urban sawmill and custom furniture shop. I'm running for Tacoma City Council, because I think my resume has prepared me to get results, be collaborative, cooperative, and a driving force for decisive and good decision-making to get results for the problems facing us in our city. I'd appreciate your vote this November. Brett Johnson, Tacoma City Council, at Large Position Six.
Thank you. And now Joe, it's your turn.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the time tonight, the League of Women Voters and everybody on the Affordable Housing Consortium for allowing us this time to speak tonight. My name is Joe Bushnell. I'm running for Tacoma City Council, District Five. District Five encompasses the South Tacoma and South End neighborhoods, from 56th Street all the way up to McKinley and alley to the city boundaries. I was born and raised in Tacoma, and I'm a graduate of Stadium High School from 2000, back in 2008, not too long ago for some folks, a long time ago for others, like me. And in my time in the Marines, I have spent time overseas in Japan for several years. I've also been stationed in California, also deployed to Afghanistan and Helmand Province. And I'm also did some time in the reserves down in Portland, as well as here locally at JBLM. After my time with the Marines, I wanted to continue in public service, and so I've been volunteering with a lot of organizations and groups here locally. My heart is in Tacoma. Having been born and raised here, you know, I've lived in Salishan, I've lived in northeast Tacoma, the west end, all over the place, and I'm proud to call South Tacoma my home. And I'm board chair of the South Tacoma Neighborhood Council in my volunteer capacity, as well as volunteer Toys for Tots. I volunteer with neighborhood cleanups. I'm also on the Tacoma Public Utility Board and many other different groups, like the Equity Action Network, and I just, all over the place. The opportunity came up to run for council and to continue to serve the community. I just could not pass up that opportunity to continue to fight and advocate for our area and our residents here. We have a lot of issues that we need to tackle that include housing affordability, homelessness, public safety, and bringing good jobs to our community, so folks don't have to travel so far in order to find good work. And I think it's really important that we stay engaged civically from the youngest generations to the older generations, and I really appreciate everyone's support so far and continue to support in the future. And again, my name is Joe Bushnell, and I'm running for Tacoma City Council, District Five. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ann, it's your turn.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Artman, and I am running for Tacoma City Council, District Number Five. And I have lived here in the district for 38 years, almost 40 years, I should say. And so I raised my son here, who graduated from Tacoma, and today he's actually a teacher in this district. I'm very proud of him. My career, it's very unique, is that I originally worked for Microsoft back in 2001. I decided to come back into my community. I'm commuting back and forth to Bellevue and to give back to my community. 9/11 was one of those circumstances that had an impact on me, and I wanted to return home. From there, I went to work for a nonprofit agency, working with children and families, and realized that a large number of children were in the foster care system in Pierce County, in fact, the highest in the state. And so part of that reason was because of the behavioral health and substance abuse that was going on in families. I thought upon myself to open up a recovery center, went back to school and received a degree in psychology and a master's in behavioral health. And so from there, I started working with individuals who were also struggling with employment and also housing. I've been working with housing for the last seven years. Received the very first tiny home village as well. It was very successful. Of those 25 people, 20 of them are still housed today, and it was through a supportive service program that we have. And from there, I was a behavioral health manager for Pierce County at the same time I was running my own business. It gave me the opportunity to work with the, helping get passports. Also, I was on the board for Vallejo, and also up in behavioral health, where I brought peer recovery coaching into Pierce County, where we now have 40 non, not prob, sorry about that, behavioral health agencies who are using those same recovery coaches. I am a person who believes that if there is a problem, there's something going on in my community, I jump in and I do everything I can to solve that problem, which brought me here. With my experience I have with homelessness and behavioral health and what's going on with affordable housing, I want to lend my experience and my knowledge, and also my provider contacts, as well as my ability to work with the city, the county, and also the state level. And thank you very much. My name is Ann Artman, running for Tacoma City Council, District Five.
Thank you all. And now we come to the questions. Each candidate gets up to 90 seconds to answer each question. Again, the live audience can text questions to 253-861-6824. That's 253-861-6824. The candidate order will rotate with each question. And for question one, we will start with Brett Johnson. This question, please offer your view of what should be the city's role in addressing its shortage of affordable housing for residents and shelter and services for its residents who are homeless.
Thank you. I think Tacoma's made a good start in increasing the number of affordable units available through the use of the multifamily tax exemption. And I think the city's also done a good job of increasing shelter spaces available through its tiny home program and partnering with other nonprofits. I think the next steps for Tacoma should be partnering with private developers and utilizing the now-available 20-year multifamily tax exemption, focused on sites that are vacant, underutilized, and along with exploring Tacoma Public Utilities can do to assist in further reducing construction costs through water, sewer, and power connections to MTFV-approved projects to more rapidly increase the number of affordable units available. As we all know, there are a number of unsanctioned encampments on both public and private property throughout the city. After being part of the call with the Coalition on Homelessness, I think the next effective step for those without a home is to create a sanctioned area or areas, so we can partner with our existing service provider network and begin to offer more success for the service providers that are logistically struggling to access clients and clients that are struggling to access resources. Having visited a number of different encampments, as well as experienced some of the impacts they have on neighboring communities and businesses, I can say that increasing, I'm sorry. Boy, I lost my train of thought there. Anyway, I'd just like to partner and create more resources and accessibility for both resources and people to access resources.
Thank you. And Joe, the same question.
Thank you. This has been an issue long before the pandemic. There's a lot of folks experiencing homelessness, and the city has a pivotal role in helping develop the relationships with our nonprofits and other groups in order to increase affordable housing, and then also making sure people don't become homeless in the first place. Oftentimes, people don't talk about what exacerbates the situations and gets people into these situations. And I think, I believe in a housing-first strategy, and what that means is building additional tiny homes and expanding shelter spaces, even creating or purchasing a hotel from the city in order to create transitional services. It's very difficult for services to find individuals that are struggling with mental health, substance abuse, or many other issues, if they are in one side of the street one day or the other side of the city the next day. We need to find hardened shelters for folks to humanely get access, be accessed by services, so that way they can be lifted up and out of their situations. Oftentimes, folks that are experiencing those issues are not going to be able to help themselves. And I really think it's a multi-level partnership between the city, the developers that create the affordable housing, as well as the nonprofits that are assisting with services. And the MFTEs, I think, are fantastic economic development tools, but I think we need a separate tool for the city in order to create truly affordable housing for our area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And the same question. You're still muted, Ann.
I have to remember to unmute myself. Thank you. I support the tiny home village, and I say that based on my own experience. I mentioned earlier that we had 25 homes, and still currently today, 20 of those people are still housed. And I support getting people off the streets as quickly as possible. But once we have them off the streets, I'd like to see them in some sort of supportive services to where we can actually make a difference in decreasing homelessness and preventing it from happening and allowing people to maintain homes. This is what I think would work very well when it comes to the city, is that creating those partnerships. I work with a lot of agencies in Tacoma that are a lot of, working with homeless folks. I would like the city to bring all of us together, but more of a diverse group. I would like to see the private donors that are taking part in this. This is a citywide crisis. I'd like to see providers that are there, bringing in Habitat for Humanity, which I've seen about 20 of our clients have been very successful there. And also, too, is that bring in Pierce County and bring in state levels where we all come together. The way that I view things is that this is not a city problem. This is in every, this is a community problem. And there are a lot of folks and hands that need to come together and truly make a difference. I do support the home in Tacoma. Just, I think it's going to work very well. But also, too, at the same time, is that bring all of our providers together and really, truly make a difference in our community. The city is doing well, but it's not a one and only city problem. It is a community problem, provider problem. And if we don't do this, I believe that we're going to see even more individuals being homeless. Also, too, is I have a prevention program that we have, and I'd like to see that through what I call Stop the Bleeding. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Kiara, your turn.
I think the role of the city and government, really in general, is to create the social fabric that we have or that we need for us to have good lives, things that we can't do individually, right? That means roads, transportation, and a huge part of that looks like community supports. And that is for those who can take care of themselves, but more than likely, it's for those who cannot take care of themselves. That means children, that's our elders. And right now, in the county, we have allowed over 12,000 people to fall through the cracks. 5,000 of those are children, right? And so it doesn't matter if it's the state that has failed us, because we are 49th in funding for mental health care, if it's the feds, because they don't believe in affordable housing, or even at the individual level, which is what some people believe. I really believe that our role as a city, and specifically as Tacoma, is to make Tacoma right. And I believe that we have the tools to do the right thing, but I think that we need to have the will to do the right thing, and that starts with funding. We're only spending $11 million a year on supporting those that are unhoused, and I think we can do more, and we have to do more. So yeah, I know we'll get into the specifics later about affordability.
Thank you. And on to our second question. The Home in Tacoma Project's goal is to create a housing growth strategy to support more housing supply, choice, and affordability. Do you support the Home in Tacoma proposal? Why or why not? And we'll start with Joe.
Thank you. I'll say yes. I do support the Home in Tacoma proposal. I think it's a bold strategy that the city is undertaking in order to increase the amount of supply and availability within our city. There are folks that are coming in from, not just from Seattle, not just from California, but from all over the country to come live in Tacoma. And believe it or not, there are people that are coming from all over the place. They're, the population is rising, and we just do not have the supply in order to house all those people. That's part of why our housing prices have gone so high. People are being priced out of their own homes. I could not purchase my own home right now if I wanted to. One of the ways to do that is to increase the amount of supply availability, and Home in Tacoma does that. Because right now, the current existing zoning regulations basically make it illegal in order to make any sort of multifamily housing on much of our land here in Tacoma. We're not utilizing it to the maximum effect. Now, are there some issues with the Home in Tacoma proposal? Absolutely. But I think those are things that we, as a community, can work through and develop. One of the things that I have a problem with is I don't think it does enough to preserve and increase the amount of green spaces. If we are going to be making more density and we're going to be removing folks' yards, we need to make sure we have fantastic green spaces for folks to be able to go to with their families, to take their pets, to have a picnic during the day. And I think we have some model cities around the world that we can take examples from and how we can model our city to have fantastic green spaces and quality of life, as well as also making sure that we have enough affordable housing for people at all income levels. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ann.
I do support the Home in Tacoma model. I think it's very innovative. It's different. It's often when things are different, it's difficult for individuals to accept that change. I do believe that the city is in the right direction. I think what would make it a lot easier and more comfortable for our community is that when we're making these decisions, and the Home in Tacoma project is that to include our community in that and let them be engaged. I think a lot of times, especially the Fifth District, is that we feel as though decisions are made and they're not a part of it. But I do support it. I love the innovative approach they have to the smaller houses. And I tell people is that I grew up with my parents in Parkland, where we had a property that was large enough to drive a minibike around it all day long. Those days are over. And I do like the idea of coming up with a project where folks can be able to purchase homes. My 35-year-old son and his wife and three children are still living in an apartment, because they can't afford a home. Part of homeownership is the American dream. It's our best investment that we can make in ourselves and in our family. And so I would just like for the city to take a serious look at working with the community, letting them be involved with what's going on, and really address some of their concerns. A lot of it is that they're afraid of that their property is going to change, that there's going to be dangers, because there are apartment complexes that are there. We really have to make sure that when we make decisions, that we look at the big picture, who it involves, and include everyone. But I definitely do support it. I just think that we need to make sure that we include everybody. And I'm proud of the city for this idea that they've had. Again, I've called it before. It's innovative. I do. It's the innovative approach, and it's the first step to some of our concerns. Thank you.
Kiara.
Here's what I know. The people that have been working on these plans are some, I know them personally, and they are some of the most brightest, most dedicated leaders that I've really probably ever met. And I'm more confident, after reading the plans and after reading how it rolls out, right? I've got about four pages that I'll spare you all with about why. But after reading through all of the plans, I know that this is the right decision. This is going to make Tacoma a more vibrant, more culturally and economically sound place to live. And really, these really, these were recommendations 10 years ago. And right now, we really just don't even have the choice. As some of our other candidates have said, we just don't have enough room for the people that are here and for the people that are coming. So for the 30-something-year-olds like myself who are scrambling to find homes for their new families, for my aunt, who is 72, who is paying 90% of her social security on rent, and for the parents who want to downsize and who are desperately waiting for their 25-year-olds to move out and find their own place to live, I support it. And really, we don't have any other choice. If we want to get to 10,000 units by 2040, this is the way that we'll get there.
Thank you. And Brett.
Sorry about that. I unmuted. So I have a little bit different stance. I support the intent. Having previously been an investor and in the construction field, we absolutely need streamlined permitting and zoning and planning. However, I think, as stated, Home in Tacoma goes a little bit too far, a little bit too fast, and is more or less a license to build whatever you want, wherever you want. I'd like to focus on corridors adjacent to transit, like to focus in areas that are underutilized, vacant, or underserved. I think this is a generational opportunity for us to take areas like the 38th Street corridor in the Lincoln District, South Tacoma Way and 56th Street, and through private funds, revitalize and have a renaissance in our underserved neighborhoods that have been struggling for 50 years or more. I do think it's important to partner with the developers. But as we experience this growth, it's important for us to harness it and put it in the right places. And when we look across the city, there are still entire city blocks that are vacant all over the city. There are underutilized or vacant buildings all over the city, and we need to start there first before we start displacing established neighborhoods.
Thank you. And our next question. Which policy tools available to the city council would you like to utilize to create more affordable housing? And we'll start with Ann.
Thank you. When I read this question, the first thing that came to mind is that what is the problem when it comes to affordable housing? It's supply and demand. That's what's driven our prices up to where a lot of us can't afford to buy homes. I think with the city tools, the tools that they have that we need to use is that you need to use the tools that's going to entice or incentivize developers to come to Tacoma and Pierce County and build these homes. So one of the concerns that they have is that if they were to come down here from Seattle and build homes, then nobody's able to afford to purchase those homes. What we need to do is that there are several things the city could do, and one of them is a multifamily tax exemption that they have, which offers property tax exemptions for developers to move and close that gap. Also, too, is that there are loans that individuals can use, especially first-time homebuyers, can use that can help to assist them. I would like to see the city use tools as far as a program that's called the Tacoma Down Payment Assistance Program. And what that program does is that it allows an individual to use $20,000 towards the down payment assistance. It's deferred for 30 years at a 2% interest. I think programs like that are the way that we're going to be able to ensure that our bike community, people who are socially, economically disadvantaged or marginalized community be able to afford to buy these homes. But first of all, is that bringing the developers here, incentivizing them, and really working with developers, as well as programs that's going to allow folks, families, to be able to purchase homes here. Thank you.
Thank you. Kiara.
I don't have all of the answers to this, but I know that there has been so many different creative answers, and one of those is Home in Tacoma. I come from a long line of creative and resourceful people, and they know how to, we know how to create something out of what looks like nothing. And so for us in Tacoma, I think that that means revisiting our zoning and our land use. Those are very easy wins. I hear permitting on every single level from the individual. Those are very easy wins. I hear permitting on every single level from the individual. To the, the group that is, or the nonprofit or the organization that is creating affordable housing that are trying to help us to our goals. That permitting is an issue. So we can incentivize permitting, we can incentivize green permitting, or we can incentivize, excuse me, green building. We can use budgets and taxes like we've done already and we've just added a 1%, 1% of 1. Blah, blah, blah. We've just added a sales tax for affordable housing and I think that that is a great start. Our Tacoma Public Utilities is. Using its surplus land to help create affordable housing. And these are all things that have been done already. And that we need to just continue doing. In addition to that, like we have to, we have to change our land use. There's really no way around it.
Thank you. Brett?
Thank you. So I think the first thing is a strategy that favors starting with affordable dirt. Because if we don't start with affordable dirt, then the project's never going to be affordable in the first place. So it's why I favor. A strategy that focuses and tailored to the needs and opportunities available in specific areas. I also support expanded use of the multifamily tax exemption, as I mentioned earlier, including the 20-year that's just now coming online. Partnering with Tacoma Public Utilities to see if there could be an opportunity for certain projects to defer the cost of the utility connections. And we could take a look at some of the areas where the city has been a little bit slow in infrastructure upgrades. And perhaps the impact fees could be absorbed by, by the city as well. And I also think another port of sustainable affordability is partnering with labor and the Economic Development Board to attract more living wage jobs.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you. This is, this is a multifaceted question. There. It, to bring in affordable housing, we do have developers here that are ready to build. They're ready to break ground on dirt. Part of the problem that increases the, the prices of, of the, the buildings that get built is not only the cost of the dirt itself. Labor is also a factor in that. Materials is a factor in that. Permitting is a factor in that. As well as the different requirements that the city puts on the developers in order to build those buildings. For example, when a builder goes in to build a, a larger building. They might be tasked to completely redo all the sidewalks. Well, is that a city function or is that a developer function? Is, is the streets the, the city's purview or in the sidewalks? Or as soon as the sidewalks go in, is it? And so that's a conversation we need to have. And if it is the developers' purview to do that. What can we do to reduce the costs on the developers in order to bring those buildings up with? Because it costs a lot of money to, to, to build those as well as other utility connections. The infrastructure bill that is being brought up through Congress, I want to see how we can utilize that to subsidize some of these projects. At the city level, so we can bring more affordable housing online to bring those costs down. So, because that's what's really driving up the, the prices on these homes is the cost of building. And so if we can bring and bring those costs down, we can make it more affordable for the folks in our community.
Thank you. I want to remind the audience that if you have questions, they need to be relevant to all of the candidates. And you can text them to 253-861-6824. That's 253-861-6824. Please do not try to use the chat during this meeting. Thank you. Our next question. We often hear that market rate developers need to play a part in solving our affordable housing crisis. What role do you see market rate developers playing in addressing this issue? And this will start with Kiara.
Uh, yeah. So, so I think that this is one of the hard ones. Because I think it's frustrating to see when we know that our paramount issue right now is affordability. I think it's pretty frustrating to see that we only have market rate buildings going up. And the reality of our supply and demand issue is that we do need market rate units as well. Right? This, the affordable housing crisis is something that we've created and that we can come out of. And it really comes down to land and money and making it easy to do the right thing. The reality is while it's, while we have. Let's see. Trying to think of how else can I say this? So, right now we have folks that should be living in the market rate units that are living in affordable units. And that's making what we do have scarce. So we need to build both and we need to build both at the same time. And what's hard is that what's first to be built is what's designed to be first to be built and that's the market rate. So as we've talked about before, we need to be incentivizing our market rate friends to do the right thing. And they have a bottom line too, and they will do the right thing if we make it easier for them to do the right thing. And that means expanding our use of multifamily tax credits or exemptions. And that means if we really want to get spicy infrastructure dollars and things of that nature. But we have to ask for what we want and, and we cannot force people to do the right thing. We can only incentivize what we want.
Thank you. Brett?
Thanks. So I think part of our, our solution here is policy that streamlines the permitting process. Along with planning and zoning and areas where vacant or underutilized properties and sites are available for private development. A lot of times when we look at some of the projects that are underway or proposed projects. There's a number of additional costs involved to the developer as a result of lawsuits, which results in the actual cost of the lawsuit. Plus the additional debt services that wait for approval for the project to happen, which inevitably gets translated to the cost of the units when the building's complete. So I think favoring a, a policy and sponsoring policy that promotes builders to go into areas where they're not going to reach those challenges. Where neighborhoods are saying, yes, we want new buildings, we want affordable units and we want to be part of the process. And building collaboration between the city, neighborhoods and developers is absolutely something that I support and want to be a part of.
And Joe?
Thank you. I, yeah, this is a very complicated and we, market rate developers are a part of the solution. Like has been echoed here, there's housing that's a need at all levels, at all income levels. We definitely need our development community to step up and be a part of that solution to bring more affordable housing online. But I think we need to help them step up as well. At the end of the day, they need to be able to make these projects pencil out, these projects. They have to pay debt service. They have to, there's a lot that goes on in order for these projects to go, to go up. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that as a city, as a community, we're supporting these projects through either. Like the MFTEs, which are great economic development tools, especially for our business districts. But again, I think that we need to have a separate tool specifically for affordable housing. And get our developers to help develop that and bring it on board. MFTEs only go off, I think, 80% of AMI. I'd like to see, I'd like to see a policy tool that brings in 50% of AMI and even lower. And I want to see that our market rate developers in on those conversations to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And Anne?
Thank you. This is a very difficult conversation. It is for me because I. See individuals that are struggling with this every day. One of the concerns I have is that. Number one, I know that when it comes to developers that you, you have a contract and you have some specs and you have ideas and, and suggestions and. Things that are printed out and all of a sudden you have a project that's a million dollars and six months later it's a million and a half dollars. That makes a huge difference when it comes to the developer. I also understand too is that normally what we do is that we say 20% of these houses are going to be affordable housing. I've seen documents to where they've got a whole list of developers on there and it says that they will agree to do 20, 30, 40 units at, at affordable housing. But you can look at a column that says completely zero. I think if we really want to make a change when it comes to affordable housing is that. When we're entering into these contracts and working with the city and we're coming up with plans and talking to developers is making it very intentional. Is that if we say 20%, it's going to be 20%. But our honesty is that to truly make a difference, it probably needs to be 30 or 40%. Think that we need to be intentional, intentional about what we are going to do to make a difference. When we bring a developer on board, I understand market rate. We need, they need to make revenue. They're a business. But the same token is that when you come on board with the city, you need to understand is that we've got a crisis here. When we say 20% or higher, we need to make sure and have oversight. It truly is 20%. Leave you with one thing is that I can send someone over to an affordable housing that opens up at 9:00 AM. By 9:15, completely all the homes are sold out, just from experience. And I, I, that happens often, very often. And I have a hard time understanding it. So the words I want to leave you is affordable housing, whatever we decide on, make it intentional. Let's follow through.
Thank you. Our next question. In the last two budget bienniums, the council has allocated more than $2 million in total. For the Affordable Housing Fund to provide housing assistance and create affordable housing units. If elected, what amount of funding would you support allocating to this fund? And why do you feel this is an appropriate allocation amount? And we'll start with Brett.
Thanks. I think the first place is for me to start with this issue. Is maintaining the existing $2 million fund and adding the proceeds of the recently passed increased sales tax as a first step. To for growing that, that, that piggy bank, if you will. And in conjunction with that, the city needs to stand up sanctioned camping area, sanctioned camping area or areas. Where we can start to. Geez, excuse me. We can start to centrally locate people in need. So that resources can access them and they can access resources more effectively versus everybody caravaning around the city. You know, trying to find each other. And we obviously are living that that's not a recipe for success. From that point, once we get that, those, the sanctioned areas stood up, partner with local resources. And, you know, we talked about all the different needs and having personally been inside of 15 or 20 encampments in the last five years. I can tell you that the needs are broad and they're probably more diverse than the last time I was in an encampment. And I think until we get everybody centrally located and start consistently accessing resources with clients. I don't think we're actually going to know where we need funds or what we need. So that centralized encampment or encampments is a key component of that as we start to. Get, get resources together, stand up additional resources as we discover what we need. And give people, people a path for a better and safer life.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you. This is definitely an important part of the toolkit that the city has in order to bring more affordable housing online. I definitely support the $2 million that's currently being budgeted. I'm definitely open to seeing more. I would like to also see whether the sales tax revenue for affordable housing can come into play in this. And where we can have not just more, more money that's for affordable housing. But also that there is accountability measures that are attached, those dollars that are spent. Where has the money gone currently? What kind of projects has, has it been successful with? If there are any unsuccessful projects, then what can we learn from that and better utilize our, our budget and dollars? And so I'm open to conversations on how much money that is going to be. And I definitely talk with our, the Tacoma Housing Authority, Habitat for Humanity and many of our other nonprofits as well as development community. To see what we need as a city in order to really push the needle on bringing more affordable housing online. But then obviously anytime money is spent at the city, we need to make sure that there's accountability for, for that money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne?
Thank you. When I read this question, the first thing that came to mind is that $2 million and we've watched affordable housing not change a whole lot. And homelessness is still where it was, if not even worse than it was two years ago. So my first question is that the $2 million that we, that we did, we put towards Affordable Housing Fund is that. Where did it go? What was it applied to? And so I don't mean that in a negative way, but I asked the question, I like to look at the big picture and say, what's working and what's not? And so I think as a city council person, I would like to sit down and find out those last, those $2 million is that. What exactly was working, what wasn't working? And also too is that, is that take a look at, at our investments into our working families and our economy. And really try and, and put our funds towards economic development as far as really changing things. I, this is a tough question. And then the other thing I thought about too is that we need to look at dollars even at the federal level. There are lots of funding that come out through the federal government and all the questions, we haven't talked about that. And perhaps because I haven't got on the city council just yet, I'd like to see us make ways of actually creating funds. Opposed to just this $2 million. But first of all is that find out what was working and what's not. Is it going towards the Home in Tacoma program? And then also too, it's very difficult to say, let's just add more money into it without understanding where it's going to go, what we're going to do with it. And again, is that what's been effective and really changing things and where we can divert some of our money to really make a difference in our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Kiara?
And just to put this in perspective, $2 million. I will say this because this is what I feel in my heart and, and I feel like affordable housing and housing in general, housing stability is really our paramount issue. I cannot say it louder. And I think that most people will probably agree with me on that. We spend over two, well over $250 million of a $300 billion budget. On, on many different things, right? And so when you put that into perspective, $2 million really isn't much. And in the last budget cycle, we had about almost $10 million in requests from them. And that's from people that are doing the work. That's from organizations. That's from a few people that are asking for small, small, small percentages of their budget. So if we just honored what people were asking at what the nine, $10 million range. We could actually do that with the new tax that we have that's supposed to bring in about $6 million a year. That's easy. But if we just do that, are we, are we matching what we're saying our biggest issue is with our budget? And that's the really, and that's the only way I believe that we're going to get to where we need to go is if we align what we say we care about with what we spend our money on. Right? And just even more perspective, at the lowest level, we're asking our organizations, we're asking Habitat for Humanity. We're asking the Housing Development Department, or excuse me, Tacoma Housing Authority. It costs them on the lowest end, $5 million and on the highest end, it's costing them about $40 million. Dollars to put a single development together, right? And we're talking about needing to get to 10,000 units. So $2 million is not enough.
We're out of time on that one. Thank you. Next question. As a council member, how do you envision yourself working with the state legislature through the city's annual legislative? Agenda to push for policies to support affordable housing development in Tacoma? And what are those policies? You would like to address? And we will start with Joe.
Thank you. I'm, I'm a governor first professional by trade. And so I often advocate on behalf of the local industries in the hospitality industry here in Tacoma Pierce County. So I've developed relationships at the local level, at the state level, as well as the federal level. With our elected, their staff and different policy folks around, around the state and the country. I think that the city's annual legislative agenda, agenda has been good and very aspirational. And they push for a lot of fantastic policies that would help the city, especially when it comes to. Addressing a lot of our affordability issues. Part of the, the past legislative agenda included expanding the MFTEs to include that 20-year from the legislature. I'd like to see a new policy developed specifically for affordable housing that I've not seen currently. We, like I mentioned before, MFTEs are fantastic economic development tools. But that is not the end-all be-all for bringing affordable housing online. And we need to find ways to work with the state legislature and our federal partners in order to bring more money in to lower the cost of housing development. So that way we can bring more affordable housing units online. So we can get to that $10,000 mark. We need to make sure our Tacoma Housing Authority has the money it needs. We need to make sure Habitat has the money it needs. And we need, and the only way we're going to do that, and we're not going to be able to do this as a city alone, they can do it through policy at the state and the federal level. And I'm, I'm right there to push it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne?
Thank you. I also agree is that when it comes to working with legislators, I'd like to see us to, to help and create. And bolster our budget that's actually going to make a difference in our housing. And I also would like to see us looking at a funding sources that are allocated through the federal government and at the state level. That actually can really make a difference in our community. Along with that is that, and I use this word a lot, is I'd like for us to be intentional is that when we work with the legislator. And we are going to put a certain amount of money and funds towards affordable housing, I really like to see some sort of an oversight. I mentioned earlier about the 20% of affordable housing or 30% really going towards that. I like to see the legislator working with us to ensure that those fundings that are funneled down into the city of Tacoma. Really are specific to those needs that make a difference in housing our individuals. The other thing is, is that. We are the voice of our, of our community and our district. And I want to work closely with our state legislator and pushing policies. That support increasing affordable housing. At the end of the day, I believe that the legislator is our advocate and also at the state level. We need to create those. we need to create those relationships that are strong for they really understand our needs. Tacoma right now is at a critical state and things are not getting any better right now. But I believe in working with a legislator, really truly understanding what our concerns are, that we can make a difference. But I'd like to see with that relationship that those dollars really truly do make it to the city of Tacoma and make a difference in our community.
Thank you, Kiara.
Um, so I think that this is a, this is an easy one, right? So we just saw that the House Bill 1590, which is the bill at the state level that allowed us to get the one tenth of 1% sales tax, right? So that was the work of, I'm sure, many collaborations. And while I need, I need more time to think critically about what next specific policy steps that I'd want to take. I know that I do have the relationships locally and at the state and federal level to get work done, right? I've been endorsed regionally, at the federal level and at the state level. And I know I've only been endorsed because I know that I have the relation, because I know that I'm I'm ready to get this work done, right? And I know that housing affordability is not just Tacoma issue, that is a county issue, that is a regional issue. And moreover, it's affecting every major city that we that we have in America. So we're not just going to get it done relying on Tacoma alone. And so it's going to take relationships and partnerships to get this work done. And I'm willing to rely on that and the smart people that already have these answers to get us where we need to go.
Thank you. And Brett.
Yeah, so very early in my business career, Small Business Development Council Coach, if you will, told me that business is a team sport and I just kind of took that and ran with it and I've applied it ever since. And today, my organization's 10 people or less, but we partner with companies that are husband and wife teams, so only two people or as large as 50 to 100 people. Because it is indeed a team sport, and I think that same thing applies at the multi-jurisdictional level. Where I've also had experience as an air traffic controller, working at the federal level with local airport jurisdictions, the counties, cities, noise abatement, all that kind of stuff. So I've consistently built partnerships to effectively deliver services for the the community involved. And I also think that, you know, when we look at the Tacoma City Council, working with Ruston, working with Furcrest are important keys. And, you know, even though I'm fairly new and I'm self-managed, I have been endorsed by Pierce County Assessor Mike Lonergan, and I've been endorsed by County Councilman Han Zeiger in my first steps of building partnerships with with bigger and bigger jurisdictions.
Thank you. And again, as a reminder to the audience, if you want to text questions, you can text them to And our next question. According to the 2019 American Community Survey, only 30% of black households in Tacoma own their own home, while 61% of white households own their home. What specific actions do you support and want to see implemented to begin to reduce this disparity? And we'll start with Anne.
Thank you. This question's near and dear to my heart. The first thing I would do, of course, is that to create these provider partnerships, really allowing our black community to understand that it is achievable. And so the first thing I thought of is that awareness of understanding truly what programs are out there that can allow you to be able to purchase a home here in Tacoma. As an African American, a lot of times individuals think is that it's not obtainable. But if you're given the right direction, you can. But at the same time is that as a city council person is that to implement programs, even if it's steps in teaching people on on how to and where to find the information needed to obtain housing. Along with that, there's a lot of first time home buyer programs that are out here in Tacoma that are available to a community and I'd like for them to be able to understand how to access them, how to be taught about financial. What do I call that? Financial, I forgot the word. But I would like to see us really be able to understand the steps that it takes to be able to purchase a home and that it is attainable. But most important is that is that harnessing educational programs that empower and embody our community, a sense of fiscal responsibility. But not only that too, is I'd like to see our BIPOC community as well be able to access housing and being able to work with organizations such as Habitat for Humanity, as well as the Tacoma Housing Authority, who I'd like to see agencies like that putting funding into homeownership. Again, I keep talking about partnerships and everyone coming together. I'd like to see all of us as a whole to be able to move that needle. 30% of homeownership is very small and it is again, the American dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiara.
I think that one of the misconceptions misconceptions that we have been kind of working under is that black people have never had homes. And while we are at 30% right now, homeownership has been a staple in the black community. In fact, we've been located to specific neighborhoods in the past. And so we've bought up multiple blocks in multiple neighborhoods. So I know that we can do this. We're talking about money at this point. Cultural responsive programs are absolutely necessary. They are nice. We absolutely need to have classes, first time home buyer classes that support or that are responsive to the black community. But it doesn't matter if we have those classes and when we leave, we don't have any way to compete in our local market, right? We know where, what, maybe everybody doesn't know what a black person in Tacoma makes. But our AMI is lower. So that puts us below where the Tacoma market can purchase, right? So that's number one. We need down payment programs that allow us to make more money where we don't have to thread the needle so slim, right, to be able to get in there. We can mock or we can model our veteran programs that have given, that have allowed many thousands of black people to get homes from zero down payments to low interest loans. We have to start thinking about student loans. We have to start thinking about second mortgages. But the beauty of this is that there are people that already do this work that can't buy houses, like programs like Tacoma Home Ownership Center, Habitat for Humanity. Houses in Tacoma.
Kiara, thank you so much. All right. And Brett?
Yeah, so in the course of my campaigning, one of the most constant feedback I've received on this topic from all different economic levels is financial education and financial opportunities. And I think when we think about it in very simple terms, that if you grow up in a household that does not own their home, you're not exposed to the different options that are out there and available. And you may just go your life not thinking they are an option, when in fact there are options out there. So I think partnering with the private sector, with local banks, local community leaders, and creating a program for financial options for you is something that can definitely be effective in expanding awareness to all communities and homeownership opportunities available for them. Because I think there's a lot more opportunity than what people know. And I think that comes in conjunction with expanding our living wage jobs so that people can afford these houses as they get qualified and figure out what options are in fact available or what they have to do to qualify for them.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. I think this is a really important question and I want to give a little bit of background. My, my mother is a refugee from Cambodia and she fled the Cambodian genocide back in the 80s. And she came to the United States with nothing but the shirt on her back and her two kids, my older brother and sister. And we used to live in Salishan before it was nice. Our, the floor in our home was collapsed. We were barely able to use the water in there. And so how can we go from that to homeownership? So I want to talk about breaking down barriers because that's what we're really talking about here is we need to break down the barriers to homeownership. My mother cannot speak English. Can she talk to a realtor? Can she read a legal document that's not in Cambodian? No. We have so many Asian American and other immigrant communities here that have barriers on languages, on knowledge, on education, financial barriers. And what we need to do is as a job, what we need to do a better job in the city is breaking down those barriers, identifying them and breaking them down. And so, and it's across the board. Homeownership is accessible and we need to make sure that we're speaking the same language as the folks we're trying to reach. And we need to be in those communities that we're trying to reach as well. And so that's, that's a nutshell. I could go on about this, but thank you.
Thank you. And this is our last question. As a council member, how would you support nonprofit organizations in the Tacoma Housing Authority in developing the nearly 10,000 units of affordable housing that the Affordable Housing Action Strategy notes are required to serve demand by 2040? And we'll start with Kiara.
This will be my shortest answer. And if you ask anybody here, I'm sure they will tell you land and money. That's it. You could, they've been doing this work for so long that those are the the two things that really make a difference in these projects. And if you really, really, really want to get spicy, as I said before, we could talk further about permitting and making that easier. And we could talk about an infrastructure fund, but we can't do anything without land and we can't do anything without money. So the beautiful issue, I mean, the beautiful thing is that we can do that. Those are, those are problems we can solve.
Thank you, Brett.
So I think it's important, leadership, I think, is the first place that we go with this topic. When we look at, you know, maybe when the federal tax code changes, there's a six month to a year period where everybody kind of digests it and figures it out. Decisive policy on where we want structures built and how we're going to assist is absolutely necessary to get the public sector unleashed, sorry, the private sector unleashed and partner with us in developing and building and delivering the units that we need. So I think effective strategy that targets neighborhoods in need, land that will unequivocally result in affordable projects and also inadvertently revitalizing all of our, not all of our, as many of our underserved areas as possible.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. This is, this is super important. We, in order to meet this strategy to get 10,000 affordable units, we need bold and decisive action at the city level, which makes it like, like the Home in Tacoma project, which doesn't make vast tracts of land in our city illegal for developing multifamily and and upzoning our, and increasing density in our areas. And just because we increase density doesn't necessarily mean we lose quality of life as long as we maintain fantastic green spaces and others, other green spaces as well. I would like to work with our nonprofits and the Tacoma Housing Authority and others to leverage federal dollars, state dollars, city dollars. So that way we're not competing for the same dollars. We are working together to make these dollars go the furthest. And and also making sure that any tax dollar money that we're using is going to the right projects at the right time, at the right place, especially along transit corridors. And so that way we can reduce parking requirements and also, you know, increasing density near our business districts. So we have thriving business districts as well. So it's very walkable. And thank you.
Thank you. And Anne.
Thank you. I'm also going to make this very short. The reason why is that Tacoma Housing Authority has been building homes in this area for a very long time. What we can do to support them is its land and its funding. But also too is that a lot of nonprofit organizations have their own funding relationships with the state and with the CDM, with the county and with the federal level. And so it's an excellent partnership. But for us, as far as a role that we would take, would be to support them when it comes to land, when it comes to trusting their ability to to choose a location that's correct. The other one is I've been told is that it's very difficult to get. Sometimes there is a process that you go through and then they're sent back, they're denied and they're accepted, denied. So we can really work to make sure that in nearly those 10,000 units that we need to build is that helping them along the way to make this process as seamless as possible. But of course, again, most important is that it's the land and the funding and really truly accessing dollars outside of the city level as well. So, you.
Thank you. And that was our last question. Now it's time for closing statements for one minute per candidate. They will be in reverse of the voter pamphlet order. We'll begin with Anne.
I thought you were going to say Anne. Thank you, everyone. I have enjoyed being here tonight. I wanted to leave with you is that I, all these questions that we've talked about and we've discussed, I have been working with the city, the state and the county for the last seven years. I do understand the needs of what we're, what we need and also too is that what has been working and what hasn't been working. I know that the city has some great ideas that that work. I love the tiny home idea. I love the motel idea that they've got, as long as we're getting folks housed immediately. One thing I want to tell you about myself that you're not aware of is that I have sat on quite a few boards in the city as far as on Delaheau and Optin Behavioral Health Board and even Pierce County College Board as well. A lot of experience of working with individuals when it comes to solving issues that we have. I think with my experience that I've had, that I would be an excellent candidate, excellent choice for Tacoma City Council District Number Five. Because of that experience, the relationships that I have created with providers, as well as folks throughout the state. I've also been endorsed by the state level, at federal level, at the city and the county level as well. People know the work that I have done and they've trusted my abilities. So I thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you so much to League of Women Voters and the Affordable Housing Consortium for having us tonight. My name again is Joe Bushnell, running for Tacoma City Council District Five. I am proud to have earned the endorsement of the Tacoma Education Association, our Tacoma firefighters, former mayor and now Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland, former Senator Rosa Franklin and many, many others. And I love our city and I really want to see it grow and thrive. We are a world-class city and we need to start acting like it. And we also need to take feedback from the community and make sure we're developing in smart, measurable and efficient ways to make sure that everybody here is lifted up and has better quality of life. We also need to make sure that we're helping folks experiencing homelessness. We need to make sure that we are bringing fantastic jobs to our community. And we also need to make sure that our streets are safe for people to walk and play in. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett?
I'd also like to thank everyone for the opportunity to participate tonight and all my fellow candidates for joining us here tonight. This is a great experience and I very much value it. I just want to leave the voters with my previous experience, both mostly as an air traffic controller, where at the military, federal and the NATO level, I worked with multiple jurisdictions, multiple flying communities to understand and deliver services for incredibly diverse amount of needs. And I think then as I added to that experience as a business owner, where I've worked with employees, understood their needs, their challenges, their lives. And we built a company here and I think that my background has prepared me to be an incredibly successful member of the council. And I would appreciate your vote in November. Brett Johnson, Tacoma City Council, at large, position six.
Thank you. And Kiara.
Thank you so much. As we wrap up, I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting. I feel like I've I've seen you all about three times in the last month. So I appreciate you all for the work that you're doing. And it's really been an honor to have this platform. What, with all of the issues that are facing Tacoma, the one thing that I've been thinking about is that it's clear that the next four years are going to be really challenging. But we have more reasons than ever to be hopeful. Every day, I mentioned before, we have innovative and resilient minds in our city already that are working to answer the questions that lie ahead of us. And while any candidate running for office in Tacoma can be a strategic politician, we need to elect leaders who are not only smart, but also brave to lead us forward. Folks who are ready to collaborate, engage in hard conversations and that take risks to ensure that Tacoma will thrive and that we will be an equitable Tacoma. Thank you again for having me and I hope that you'll vote for me, Kiara Daniels, for position six on Tacoma City Council this November.
This concludes our forum tonight. In voters' pamphlet order, Kiara Daniels and Brett Johnson are the candidates for at-large Tacoma City Council Position Six. And Joe Bushnell and Anne Artman are candidates for Tacoma City Council Position Five. You should receive your ballot and local voter's pamphlet during the week of October 17. Be sure to vote early and no later than November 2. I would like to thank the candidates who were able to join us today. Maureen Fife from the Affordable Housing Consortium, the Timekeeper Terry Baker, the Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters and the Affordable Housing Consortium for sponsoring this forum. You can see other League of Women Voter candidate forums at www.tacoma pierce l w v.org. Be sure to read your voter's pamphlet, look at vote411.org where you can find answers to questions posed to all candidates running for office, read the candidates' websites and do all you can to be an educated voter. And don't forget to vote before November 2. And don't forget to vote before November 2. Thank you and have a great evening. Take care, everyone.